All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to excuse Ms. Cleland McGrath and Ms. Hubick from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Ms. Hubick and Ms. Cleland McGrath. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Which carries. Okay, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements and committee reports, but before we do those formal announcements, we're going to do some fun stuff and hand out some really nice ribbons for, as you can see, we've got some pictures from our fantastic Independence Day Parade in Anacortes, and we'll get right to it. And of course, I forgot the lapel mic, but here we go. Tell you what, I'm going to go ahead and make the announcement for those who don't know. And for best marching group in third place was Oars, in second place Twisted Pixies, and in first place Cabagantes Del Northwest Horses. So that was best marching group. And then next for the best float, third place Sailor Sea School and Merman of Anacortes, second place Azuzu Garden, and first place Anacortes Rotary. And I believe that's four years in a row for the Anacortes Rotary for best float. So I'll come out there and I'll ruin some pictures and hand out some nice wonderful ribbons and certificates. Okay, on to our other announcements. So if you haven't noticed, Commercial Avenue Complete Stretches Project Phase One officially began last week, so we're starting the timer, but you saw them out there this morning setting cones and closing lanes, so please be ready for that. Commercial Avenue will be open during construction, but again, there'll be reduced driving lanes from Eleventh to Thirteenth Street. So again, the main intersection, the Safeway intersection. It'll be awesome when it's done, but we'll have to work our way through it as they make it happen. Alternate routes to downtown businesses and State Ferry Terminal will be clear, are clearly signed, and alternative route maps are available online. So recommended you take our avenue to downtown, or if you're going to the ferry, some Sixteenth and D. Thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department for Kids Are Best Fest last weekend. Storvik Park filled with families enjoying games, learning about local resources, and enjoying a wonderful day. And then finally, just a heads up, the Ace of Hearts Dog Park will be closed starting Monday, twenty-first of July, to allow city crews to complete work on the stormwater detention pond inside the park. This work is allowed under the Hydraulic Policy Approval Permit from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Weather permitting, we expect it to be only a week, so thank you for your patience on that. And that's all the announcements that I have, and we're on to council announcements. Finance Committee is up first.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on July tenth, and it was council members McDougal, Cleland McGrath, and myself, and Department Head Steve Hoagland was there with us, and Rhonda Peck also. And we talked about updating the city's purchasing policy, which we do every few years, and this update is a result of state legislative changes. So essentially, it's some clarification and some edits to just make the document clearer. And there were some changes to the small works roster as well. So those will be coming forward to council, both the original, or the current version, and then the redline version. We also talked about the ERP, which is our accounting software program. We've been with Eden, I believe, for a long time, but that's being phased out. So the staff had a kickoff meeting on that same day, July tenth, and they are, it's being installed this week. And this is a twenty-four month process, and it happens in phases. So all of the accounting department, accounts payable, receivable, general ledger, purchasing, utility billing, HR, and payroll will all be phased in over the next two years. And it seems like it'll be a good, a good transition and a good schedule for doing that for the best possible adoption of this new system. We also talked about the Capital Facilities Plan, which is a six-year plan we adopt every year, and the departments have finished their initial submissions for projects. And in August, the department heads will meet with the mayor and go over that, and then that will come to council as well. And that will, there will also be discussion of the facilities assessment that was completed, and the priorities, and the timing of those projects of maintenance of our facilities. We found out the sales tax has been up for the year moderately, about two percent, which is good news. We expected it to be less, but it's not as good as it has been traditionally. So we're tracking that very closely and budgeting to that. Our, our plans are going along with that. Our building activity is still lower than we would like it to be, as it is pretty much everywhere. There's a nationwide slump in building. Our utility taxes, which is one of our other major sources of revenue, private utilities taxes are going up because of the additional costs of natural gas and electricity right now, and our public utility tax is staying stable. And that was it. And we'll have an update from Mr. Hoagland in the next few weeks, our quarterly update for council and the public. Thank you.
Any questions for Finance?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a quick, because I'm, so for sales tax, we're two percent above the projection, but still under what we would normally be, so we're still...
So we're two percent over what we were last year. So it's, I think, we projected it to be a little bit less than that, is my understanding. I'm going to look at Mr. Hoagland in the back. Yes, he's nodding.
Great, thank you.
Yes, okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, good question. And then for the public, typically, we need typically seven percent is what we need to cover our typical increase in cost. So that's the budget challenge that council will be faced with as we approach the budget season coming up. Any other questions? Okay, next up is the Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Planning Committee met right before this meeting. Ms. Moulton and myself, Ms. Cleland McGrath's out of town. We talked about, among other things, the GMA obligation to designate natural resource lands as part of the comp plan process. And as some of you may recall, we had Greg Colburn, professor at University of Washington, come to the North Star Symposium a number of weeks ago. That presentation that he gave about homelessness and how it is tied to our general housing problem was really well received. And so as part of our North Star Housing Task Force, we're talking about bringing him back, potentially a different speaker if he's not available, but having at least one, potentially more speakers at an event somewhere in the county, maybe Mount Vernon centrally located, to talk about housing and its importance in the context of the comprehensive plan updates. So that is hopefully coming soon. No one has reached out to him to gauge his schedule yet, but if not him, someone else. And we feel like it's an important time to engage the community in that discussion as we head into the, the final months of the comp plan process. More on that later.
Any questions for Planning Committee? Any other announcements or committee reports I may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
We had a Public Safety Committee meeting after last Monday night's council meeting, and it was myself, Council Member Cleland McGrath, Council Member Hubick, Chief Floyd, and the mayor. And there was a discussion that was had about a public safety boat. Now, just to be very clear, this is not the same boat that we have received the grant funding for, for fire. This is, this is a different boat. But we receive grant funding for, I'm murdering this a little bit, so I apologize, marine use. So there's some marine use grant funding that we receive for the police department that we've used to pay for things like life jackets, things like that in the past. We do get it on a reoccurring basis, but it was thought that we should possibly buy a public safety boat. So that's something that is being looked at. Again, it's not through any new sources of funding, it's through funding that we do already receive. But it was the first that we had heard about it at the public safety meeting, and it is not required to come to full council because the threshold for purchase of that boat doesn't meet the threshold for things to come to council. It's about fifteen thousand dollars. So what we asked for at the meeting, and what I think we will all be receiving probably very soon, is a memo from Chief Floyd that will outline the sources of the funding, the purchase of the boat, and basically just a little bit more education to us on council, all seven of us, on what that program is and how, how it will be, be looked at to move forward.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Young.
Just as an elaboration question for you. The boat is one thing that can be, the funding can be used on, are there other areas that it might, I know that it might be able to be used for, or is the money sort of specifically for boat, or, you know, whatever the police department or the department decides that they wanted to use it for?
That is a great question. As I understand it, it can be used for, for multiple different things, but it all has to be around marine use of police having to do with the water. But I am looking forward to that memo from Chief Floyd, so that it will be very clear to all of us, the path, the path forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Again, the opportunity came up quickly. It's an outcropping of trying to get training for all of our public safety folks, and Chief Floyd was be able, able to get funding through, I'll, I'll mess it up who the source is, but it's, it can only be used for public safe, police, public safety boating things there. But again, that, that memo will be forthcoming, so appreciate it.
That's good.
All right. Any other announcements or committee reports I may have missed? All right. We are on to item number four, which is public comment. A member of the public wishes to address the council anything not on our agenda, and I got three folks signed up. One is pickleball, one's pool resolution, and one's parking for the ferry. So I'll, I'll save the pool resolution for when we get to that. But you sign up, you get to go first, and I've got Bashi Morris, pickleball courts and Guimas Ferry. You sure?
(Audio cut off).
Well, yeah, just, we can pass them out, and you can go, go to the microphone, and because we want everybody to hear what you want to say. Make sure it's on the...
One that says push.
There it is, you got it.
Bashi Morris, sixteen eighteen Seventh Street. I just distributed a photograph of an aid vehicle on its way to the Guimas Ferry, just about at the intersection of Sixth and I, which is not a designated arterial for the ferry because it is a substandard street. The pavement on that street goes from the forward edge of your desk to the forward edge of your desk. In that space of about twenty-three feet that's paved is expected to be two ongoing traffic lanes and two parking areas. So we've had a lot of things going on in the last three months about parking and ability to be safe in this neighborhood, and we are concerned. So I just wanted you to be able to see that part of what is going to be coming before you at the end of the month after our comment period will be concerning the safety of these upland improvements and how they are going to affect our neighborhood. The other thing I'd like to talk to about is the pickleball courts. It was, I was here last week, and that was a wonderful presentation, I think it was by...
Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you.
Parks Director.
Parks and, I knew it was Parks and Rec, okay. One of the things that he said was that they did not include informing four homes on the north, on the, on the west side of J because sound doesn't travel up. And that's a little bit disingenuous to have the proponent be the one that decides where sound goes. And sound, sound does travel up, and you can ask anyone who lives on Twelfth Street whether or not it travels up or down. The people that live on the water side, they're down low, it doesn't travel down. Anyway, so that, I think, is an issue that really needs to be brought before the people that live next to the pool. There are four or five homes there that are not included in any of this discussion. And on that note as well, concerning the comment period that the residents in the three-hundred foot, three-hundred yard radius of the ferry upland improvements coming up, I showed you pictures last week of the twenty-six cars parked diagonally in front of the two homes on my block, on the north, on the south side of Seventh Street. Neither of those two homes fell within the three-hundred yard limit. So the only way they would have known about what's coming up would have been to use the Sixth Street intersection and seen the yellow signboard, or read every little blurb in the back of the paper. And I can guarantee, none of us take that intersection ever. Thank you.
Malcolm McCutcheon, parking at the ferry, but, sorry, I, I can't read it and/or I butchered the pronunciation.
(Audio cut off).
All right.
All right, Malcolm McCutcheon, sixteen thirteen Seventh Street. Most of my issues are in parking. I'm one of the houses that somebody came up with the idea of diagonal parking in front of. So they hang out over the street and hang out over the sidewalk. None of the neighbors there encouraged anybody to park diagonal. People are backing out, it's very high traffic on foot traffic. I don't know what's going on after the ferry closed down, but over this weekend, we had eight cars parked in front of my house that do not belong anywhere near there. And I know the parking limit says seventy-two hours, so legitimately, I could call the police if they're parked seventy-two hours because they don't live there. So I'd like the diagonal parking to stop anyway. And on part of that, Sixth Street gets parking permits. Seventh Street does not. All, all we'd like to have is two parking spots permitted in front of each one of our houses. Because it looks like with the loss of twenty-six spots down at the ferry, it's going to become a nightmare parking on Seventh and Eighth, which leads to stop signs. Apparently, nobody in this town understands you can't park with your bumper touching a stop sign. Yesterday, the Sixth and I stop sign, somebody was parked within six inches of the stop sign on the roadway. The day before, on Seventh approaching I, there was somebody within a foot of the stop sign, completely on the roadway. The stop sign was completely to the right of his vehicle as he was facing. That's it for parking. One thing I didn't write down is I've been out of town, so I didn't see the ADU proposals for two ADUs, but it looks like a workaround to get a triplex in Old Town, since you can have two attached ADUs by the new proposals. And that's just something I'd like to bring up.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I have Linda Martin signed up. Do you want to go now, or you want to wait till we get to the, okay. Anybody else want to address the council anything not on our agenda? Okay, we will, checking online real quick. Okay, we will move on to item five, which is our consent agenda, items five A and B. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I move approval of consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to other business. Other business, item six A. Six A is a presentation of Economic Development Strategic Plan. And Mr. Coleman has this one. You all have it because it was in your packet as well. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. My name is John Coleman. I'm the director of the Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department. And tonight, I'm presenting to you our Economic Development Strategic Plan that I've been working on for the past several months. This plan, we had a consultant, the Center for Economic and Business Research at Western Washington University, put this together. I'm going to go over the, the purpose of the strategic plan, the process that we went through, and methodology that they took to make this plan, some key findings, and our next steps. So the purpose was pretty simple. We want to illustrate how the city can strengthen and support local businesses, as well as improve high quality of life in the city of Anacortes, with a goal of robust public process to shape the community's economic vision and economic goals. The report itself has several parts to it. I'll go through these real quick before I get to the now of what they actually did for us. It has the results of a community survey in forums, so we, we had a, we had a survey put out through our website and available online and spread through social media to ask several questions that our Economic Development Committee helped craft those questions and review with CERB to see exactly what it is that the city wanted to find out and what best practices were, were given through SERB, CERB, to tell us how to go about asking those questions. And then they did the legwork for us and did the analysis. The, the results of that talk about opportunities and missing elements, so things that the city has that are in our favor, and things that the community feels we're missing that we would like to have here. So, and that includes, you know, missing infrastructure or missing businesses. And importantly, it has a vision for the future of Anacortes. And that's really what we're trying to achieve through this process is where do, what is, what is our vision for our economic vitality? What types of businesses are we interested in having in the community? And then, only then can we determine how to get to where we want to be. We also did what's called a void analysis. It's an analysis of what businesses are in town and compared it to other towns that are similar. We chose other maritime communities and to see what, what we might be missing compared to those other communities. And you probably saw that, that's the one that has the NAICS, the NACIS codes in it. Don't get too distracted by those NACIS codes because they're somewhat outdated and somewhat incorrect, but that's just one small part of this overall analysis that we were doing. And we recognize it has some flaws to it, but it is, it is still useful in this planning And those codes also go on and on and on in the appendix. Hopefully, you didn't spend too much time going through all of those because it's many pages. The void analysis is similar to a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. It's just, it's a slightly different methodology that they did, and they call it a void analysis. They also did an economic vibrancy literature review, and these are, the key findings talk about what each of the economic vibrancy literature review is, like, what we have in our community that is in our favor. Similarly, they reviewed our existing infrastructure, such as, we're a maritime community with a strong port and deep water port, and we've got an airport, and we have, you know, all of these arts, arts community, strong volunteer organizations, and just interest in the community and volunteerism. So analysis of all of these things we got going for us, basically, that are, that can contribute to economic vitality. And then, of course, an existing infrastructure gaps. So what are we missing, you know? We're missing, like, for example, we're missing interstate highway. You know, there's nothing we can do about it, but because we don't have an interstate highway, that puts a disadvantage to other communities that do. And so, again, understanding what we have and what we don't have, so we can get to where we want to be. And then, of course, summary of those strengths and weaknesses. I spoke briefly about the survey results. We received two-hundred-and-ninety-one responses, which is a pretty darn good number. It's not, not an amazing amount, but it's, it's a really good number. The, our CERB was really excited about the number of responses. It seems low, but that's actually pretty good. We also held an in-person community forum where we invited people in to come and speak with our consultants about what, what is their perspective on the community, what's missing, what they'd like to see. And they had a list of questions that they walked the, the, the people that attended through to, it wasn't just totally free form, there were some things that we were trying to get at, and then expanded upon those questions based on the results. So it was pretty good, pretty good interaction. And then, the result, the survey results also indicated that we have some key challenges, including housing affordability, limited public transportation, a lack of business diversity. The survey respondents also highlighted concerns about living wage, job stability, and barriers to business growth. Now, so far, when we look at these key findings that we're finding, there's, there's nothing surprising here. These are things that the Economic Development Committee has talked about in the past. I'm sure all the other city council members are well aware of the housing affordability issues, transportation issues. We're on an island, we're far from the interstate, we have a lot of single-family homes spread out, so there's, you know, the walkability isn't always the best in our community. But it's important that we understand what, what our weaknesses are and document them. And this is also a verification process to make sure that, you know, we talk about these things anecdotally, and, you know, now through this process, we've verified the yes, that these are in fact issues that we're perceiving, that we're not just perceiving, they are perceived everywhere, or statistically exist. And this is just an example of one of the survey questions, stolen right out of the report and put up on the screen for you to see what, what these survey respondents looks like. The void analysis also indicated the lack of several business sectors, including physicians, surgeons, attorneys, and dentists. This suggests opportunities for target business recruitment. So we know that we're short these certain job industries, business sectors. So, we know that we're short these certain job industries, business sectors, so perhaps we can find a way to target those types of businesses and recruit them to come into the community. Survey respondents also noted that retail gaps, such as affordable grocery stores, clothing options, household supplies, and childcare are lacking in our community. Again, things we were pretty sure existed, concerns that we had, but our community has verified that for us. Through the meat of this document is really the recommendations for addressing each of the topics that I've listed up here on the screen. These are taken, these are all of the sections that they talked about. So, for example, under expanding housing options, they recommend increasing housing density to address affordable housing, provide incentives for developers to build, revise zoning and building codes with more detail. I'm not going to read through the entire document, but this is the part of the document that actually gives some measurable actions that we can take to address each of these items. And knowing that these are areas that we can't, we have work to do, we're not just limited by the recommendations in this report. We all know our community really well, and we plan to work with our community members and with the City Council and staff to come up with other ways to address, you know, for example, service gaps and market voids.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
No, Mr. Coleman, if I might add to what you've already said, just for a little bit of clarity. Anacortes as a whole is a wonderful place. That's why we're here. But also, there are challenges to our city that we need to work through and find out about, and collectively try to find solutions that allow us to not only enjoy the quality of life we have, preserve the standard of living that we have here, but there are things that are missing. And what we, as a city, and the department, and the mayor, and council wanted to find out was, what were they? Were they anything beyond what we were thinking already? But it concretely put it in writing. And what it allows is for us to do targeted, targeted work toward attracting those things or finding those things. So, it really, it really is a labor of love in the way that we needed to know what we know. And even now, as we talk about reduced revenues, you know, it also makes it clearer when we begin to itemize what we're looking for, prioritize what we think we can get from low-hanging fruit. And what this report does is just a work in progress in a beginning point, but for the cost of what we paid for it in order to get what we got, it was a bargain for our city. It really was. So, you know, I know it was a bit of back and forth with Mr. Coleman, the team, and the mayor's office, trying to get specifically what we were looking for, because they, you know, the city had a lot of other plans on the table at the time, a lot of other meetings. But we came away with a great report. And this is only the beginning, because we will move forward from this into more of a roundtable discussion about some of the items that we think that we can help. And this report kind of puts it out. So, anyway, sorry, Mr. Coleman, I just wanted to add that to contextually set the tone for what this report really was about. I add more later on.
Thank you. So, you walked right into my takeaways. So, why did we do this? So, before we get into all the specifics of why we did, what comes next is, you know, what the takeaways are is, you know, Anacortes has a strong foundation, little assets in its infrastructure and economy. So, we've got a lot going for us. We have maritime community that's unique. We have a deep-water harbor that's unique. We've got a strong functioning port that is creating jobs, and that's a unique advantage that we have in Anacortes. We have a small airport. We have many marinas. So, we have a strong foundation. The city faces challenges related to housing. I think we all know that. We've been working really hard on addressing housing affordability, and it's a really tough nut to crack. It's not just an Anacortes thing, but we're working hard on it regionally and locally. There's opportunities to capitalize on some market voids. So, you know, what we, what are now missing gaps, we can look at as an opportunity to grow our economy in those areas. We have the opportunity to improve public services and strengthen the city's appeal. I don't know if we need to strengthen our appeal whole much, because anybody that comes into town has very strong memories and a fond affinity for this community. So, that is actually one of our, also, one of our strongest takeaways, is that people really find this a beautiful community, and a lovely place to be, and it makes people want to come back and stay here. So, addressing these weaknesses and threats will be essential to ensuring sustainable, inclusive growth. That's one of the findings from the report. Otherwise, I don't really talk like that in normal speech. Able, and they found that they were able to confirm what was expect, what we suspected, and make sure that future efforts are based on accurate info and not just anecdotal evidence. So, what are the next steps that Councilmember Young was talking about? We can use this information, we have used this information to inform our comprehensive plan update, particularly the economic development element, and it has proved useful. The Economic Development Committee will lead a process to suggest the next steps. We've already scheduled a meeting to talk about what we can, what are the next steps? What would we like to do now, based on the information that we have and the recommendations that we've received? City Council has earmarked $30,000 in the 2025 budget for follow-up work, which might include, it might not include, but it might include more studies, recruiting efforts, marketing, and other ideas that are recommended, or that the City Council would like to pursue. Tried to keep it brief for you? Ten slides or less.
Great presentation, and I know council will be engaging on this, but I just, everybody likes to cherry pick some stats out of here, and I, of course, am no exception. And I liked, well, of course, 89% on the survey, good or excellent quality of life. That was a, that was a nice stat to pull out. And then, I've seen a lot of these, again, I thought it was a good, it was a good report, no surprises. But then, the specific in there about the specific professions, I don't think I've ever seen that in one of the studies that we've done, or when I was part of the chamber looking at that. So, the specific professions were very interesting. And then, the last one I'll cherry pick was the 20% of the survey respondents said they left Anacortes for work. So, that might highlight some of the survey respondents, you know, where they are in their life, in their work, work life. So, anyway, I cherry picked some, and I know, appreciate the Economic Development Committee's work in getting this done. And so, with that, council, this is open for public comment, if anybody wants to jump in before I turn it over to council. Okay, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coleman, for your presentation. I don't think there was anything in here that was like earth-shatteringly shocking to me. You know, a lot of the opportunities for strategic growth, you laid out there pretty clearly. There were a couple of interesting notes in here that I found, specifically around one of the opportunities for improvement, which was improve community engagement. And there was a section about that, and it talked about, you know, opportunities for more community decision-making, including holding meetings at varied times to accommodate different schedules. But I also thought something really interesting in here, because I've brought this up at a few meetings now, where it talked about, we could, to get information out to people that is important, they're using utility bills to include mailer. And I know it comes up when I bring that up frequently, that a lot of people get online, you know, bills. And I actually had asked our Public Works Director to pull those numbers, and I think we might all be surprised to learn that nearly 70% of people in Anacortes still receive their utility bills in the mail. So, it's quite a bit less than we would, than we would expect. So, as we're, you know, we don't have a lot of money to do a lot of things, but I did at one point ask the mayor how much it costs to put inserts into utility billings, and it costs about $900. And I feel like $900 every once in a while for something really important could be a worthwhile tool to help get information out and allow for more community engagement. So, as we're looking at that $30,000 for more studies, which I think is certainly, we could do more studies and probably get a lot of the same information, we could also spend some of that $30,000 at certain points through the year, doing a $900 mailer included in our utility bills to 70% of our constituents. So, just something, just a little food for thought there.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young, and then Mr. McDougal.
To that point, it's an excellent point. I think when we were looking at the investment, in my personal opinion, we needed to do an investment to find out what Anacortes needed, as opposed to Skagit County, that's one part that we are all plugged into. The focus, I felt, that the city, or the committee felt, was that the city needed to see what Anacortes had, did not have, what we could do, and how we could do it to benefit Anacortes. And then, we look at our symbiotic relationship to the rest of Skagit and the state of Washington. That is an excellent point, and that is one of the things that we wanted to have on the table, in deciding how we wanted to go about it, to inform people, to try to figure out what ideas are. We've got a repository of brilliant people here in Anacortes, retirees that is, what, 31% of the population, that's got an enormous amount of talent. The question is, how do we use it? Are we catering to them and that? Because when we look at our city and talk about the Saroptemists, the Rotary, the Kiwanis, the Eagles, any of the other groups that I'm not mentioning, you look at the amount of money people are bringing and putting on the table, who are in that age group and others. So, you know, looking at, the thought was that the Economic Development Committee, and looking at those things that we can achieve, those low-hanging fruits that can benefit the city, all of that's on the table. And so, the budget was really all about trying to figure that out, and using the assets and resources, whether it's E-DAS, whether it's any of those, to help us come up with a tangible solution and implement it. And that was what it was really all about. Thank you.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Mr. Coleman. I thought, you know, I think we all kind of recognized that there wasn't anything sort of like monumental, or like surprises in here. But, you know, perhaps most importantly, we got essentially a set of outside eyes to take a look, and to confirm essentially what we already thought. So, that's always good, to get like an objective set of opinions. I think what we have here is a list of kind of the what, and I'm really actually very much looking forward to the next phase where we explore the how. There's a whole lot of, you know, things that we can work on. How do we work to address these? And like, as Mr. Fantini suggested, there's an idea right there for addressing public engagement. I think housing affordability, you know, we're, is, what are we missing, if anything? And so, that's what I'm looking forward to in the next phase, is figuring out the how for that entire list. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coleman, and thanks to the Economic Development Committee for spearheading this. It is good to, we definitely need to think about the how, and some of that we are doing, and will continue to do, but we always, we always need more. As far as the housing density, we were working on some of these things with our development regulations update of 2019, which we'll be updating those again as we adopt the comp plan. And we did adopt the housing action plan, and it has a long list of recommendations, and some of them are low-hanging fruit, some of them a little bit harder, and the planning commission has been going over those, and those will come to council, too. So, what are the things that we can implement, short and then long-term, to increase that housing availability? So, multifamily, mixed use, preserving the city's character, all those things, and our zoning and building codes, and also incorporating what the state has done, and how we build that, and the walkability that we have in so much of our community, but we don't have it in the outlying region, so how do we, how do we improve that? Also, Skagit Transit, I'm on the board of, and they, we just passed our long-range transit plan, and that's leading to some changes in service. And the idea is to have shorter time elapsed between buses, so they are actually more useful for people. And that plan was done with a lot of community input from around the county, meetings with senior center representatives, and surveys that were very well-filled out as well. So, that's just one example of the things that we're doing, but these are really great reminders, and giving us more direction in different ways to do that. So, I really appreciate that as well. So, yeah, thanks.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you for the presentation. More work, as always, to follow. All right. Move on to item number six B. Six B is an interlocal agreement with Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center. This is a discussion item with possible action, and Ms. Swetnam will give us all the details, and how it relates to item C as well, perhaps.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and members of council, and members of the audience. I want to mention that Eric Dolan is in the audience, who's the Executive Director of the Fidalgo Parks and Recreation District. So, he is here to answer questions. So, my intention here is to introduce these two items together, because they're related, and the background for them, it overlaps. And they look familiar, because they are substantially similar to interlocal agreement and a resolution that was adopted to place this proposition on the, I believe it was the August 2024 special election ballot, and that ultimately wasn't adopted by the voters. And so, the Parks, the Fidalgo Parks and Rec District reached out to the city and indicated that they want to place this before the voters again. So, we had a good roadmap of how to work with them to move that forward. The first item is the interlocal agreement, and I keep this really simple. The agreement terms are between the city and the Parks and Recreation District, and the city in the agreement agrees to place the initiative on the November 4th general election ballot. And in exchange, the district will prepare all election-related materials, and will pay all election-related costs. That was what happened during last year's process, and that worked out, that worked out well. So, those are the general terms of the agreement. I'm going to go ahead and give you the background on the resolution as well, because there's a lot of overlap here. So, the terms of the resolution are the same, essentially, as they were last time. The city, by adopting the resolution, requests that the Skagit County add Joint Proposition One to the November 4th ballot, for the voters to decide whether to approve or deny that request. And the proposition itself would create the Fidalgo Metropolitan Recreation District. That would be governed by a five-member board of elected commissioners. And the boundaries of that, of that voting district would be, or taxing district, would be coterminous, or identical with the Anacortes School District. So, adoption of the resolution tonight, you know, there is some interest in talking about the merits of where, whether that proposition should proceed or not. Tonight is really just about placing that resolution on the ballot. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
All right. Maybe I'll go with members of the public, at least somebody who signed up. If you want to go ahead now, we've got Linda Martin, who wanted to speak on this subject.
Linda Martin, Anacortes. Mr. Mayor and council members, I thank you for your time. And this weekend, I sent you a letter about the proposal for the Metropolitan District. I was very disappointed to see that, once again, is going to be on the ballot, and I've given you information about... given you information about why I don't think it's a good idea. But I understand that tonight is to talk about the resolution and the interlocal agreement. And at least I would hope that you would postpone this decision. At best, I would hope that you would vote no. And here's why. First of all, when the, the voters of this community vote in favor or in opposition to something, I think it's important that we listen to the voters. The voters have voted no, and this is exactly the same proposition coming before you. So I think as representatives, we need to listen to the voice of the people. Second thing is the actual language in the, that would go on the ballot where it says joint proposition number one, Skagit County and City of Anacortes. A normal person just reading the wording here would say, well, the City of Anacortes endorses this, the Skagit County endorses this, therefore it must be a good idea. So the wording is not appropriate. I think that there's other ways that it could be written to show that this is not an endorsement from the city because a normal person would see it as such. Also, in the RCW, I hope you take the time to look at that RCW. It talks about the initial, when this is initially enacted and that the actual levy rate could and should be put in the ballot proposition. As you know, the current levy rate is a little over nine cents per thousand. This, with this Metropolitan District proposition, they are allowed to levy up to 75 cents per thousand. When we talk about elderly people living here, and not just elderly, when we talk about the tax burden of our citizens, this has implications for a huge tax burden. And we're being asked to vote for or against in the wording here without any knowledge of the amount. And so the city does have the opportunity to actually put an amount in there. So those would be my two main points. And I hope that you think very carefully before you actually appear to endorse this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else want to speak on this one? Sure. Come on up. And, and again, just a reminder, I know council's aware that it's not, you know, pro and con on the merits of what's on the resolution. Council does have the authority to change the wording of the ballot resolution, but this is the exact same wording that was approved by council approximately a year ago. Please, go ahead. State your name and city, please.
Suzanne Roner, Anacortes. Thank you for this opportunity. Just a few weeks ago, we celebrated the birthday of our republic. The creation of our republic was a direct response to the excessive taxation of the colonists by King George III. The irony is that 249 years later, the same thing is true today. We have been subjected to excessive taxation. In Olympia this year, the governor approved a budget that added 9.2 billion taxpayer dollars to the budget over four years. The latest update from Olympia is that that's not quite enough and they might need another 800 million or so dollars. Earlier this year in Anacortes, proposition one, which was the levy lid lift for healthcare services was approved by the voters. Of concern is that nowhere on the ballot was there an expiration date for the levy. Instead, there was the following statement, "The 2026 levy amount will be used for the purpose of computing the limitations for levies in subsequent years." That sounds like a permanent levy to me. This highlights the unintended consequences of what at first glance appears to be a good idea. And then last year in Anacortes, we had this proposition that came up again and it narrowly was defeated, but it was defeated. It would, had it passed, it would have likely forever relinquished the right of the Anacortes citizens to have a voice concerning the taxation of the pool. Instead, a five-member board of commissioners would decide what was best for us. An unintended consequence of this would be, of turning this into a metropolitan park district is that it can set the stage for runaway property taxation. Currently nine cents per thousand dollars, up to 75 cents. Affordable housing is one of the biggest issues facing our city. It's mentioned in today's meeting packet several times. The usual nebulous, not so easily achieved solutions are offered such as increasing density, providing incentives to developers, revising zoning and building codes. So what makes housing unaffordable? Not having enough money to buy a house. What prevents a person from having enough money to buy a house? Excessive taxation. So how do you fix that? We can't change Olympia. We can't change the levy or the proposition for the healthcare, but we can prevent this from going through. The council members today have the unique opportunity to do something that will actually affect the affordability of every house in Anacortes. You have the opportunity to decline to proceed for the resolution 3184. Please do it. Please show that you really are serious about making housing affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay, I've got a couple folks. All right. Yep, come on up.
Steve Anderson, Anacortes. Thank you for letting me talk. So anything that's going to raise my property taxes, I'm going to say no. I'm going to vote no. Already paid money to the pool. It turns out I can't go there unless I actually paid a daily rate or I sign up and pay a membership. And yet I've got money coming out of, and I pay by my property taxes. So why do I have to do, pay additional if I even want to use the pool? That's ridiculous. And for a senior, still looking for a park course in one of the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Come on up.
Malcolm McCutcheon again. I agree with everybody here. What I don't agree with is voters said no, but we're asking again to let's enact a vote to have a never-ending taxing authority that sets their own rights for life. So if it passes, do I get the opportunity to come to you and say, I want to vote on the next thing to repeal this? And that's my only question. Because I don't, I, I think anything should be term limited bonds or something like that. If we need it, we vote on it every 10 years. We don't need a never-ending taxing authority.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, come on up.
I am Eric Dolan. I'm the new, brand new executive director of Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center. I just started this role back in April and they hadn't had a commissioner or director for quite a while. And so this process is new to me. And through my discussions with commissioners that we have currently, who are all citizens and taxpayers are affected the exact same way that everybody else is here in this room with the decisions that are made. It was, the, the things that I'm hearing today are the exact-
Eric, I'm sorry. I'm going to have you address the council.
Oh, sorry.
So the, the council's decision.
You're right. Correct. The reason why the commissioners thought it was a good idea to revisit this issue is because of the things I'm hearing now and the fact that it seems like there was a lot of confusion on what this resolution meant as far as how it affects the taxpayers being a new tax. It's not a new tax. It's just replacing an old tax. And with the explanatory statement that gets put out, the plan is to have, you know, a set limit on what the, the role is not to go to the 75 cents at all, obviously, because they're the ones that are affected. And also expand the current boundaries, which it's not currently for the Anacortes School District. It doesn't include the entire school districts and so therefore-
A little, little closer to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Since the boundaries aren't currently where they're at for the current school district, not all patrons are paying or, I guess, paying into this, you know, levy rate kind of thing. So also the pool is extremely old. We're 50 years this year. And a lot of the current levy rates and stuff aren't going to really fund any kind of new facility. And it's not meant to fund new facilities. It's really just to make sure that we have more options in the future. So that if it comes down to a point where we need to try to find a new facility, if the Anacortes wants to have a pool, it gives us, you know, maybe the opportunity to go to a private financing and actually do that because not, no bank is ever going to loan someone money if there's a chance that it's not there in six years, if it fails. So it's really just education and making sure that message gets passed correctly. Because if it did pass or fail by such a small amount, the board thinks that it's something that should be presented again because there are just as many people that like the pool and all of the programs that it does with the community and wants to ensure that it's there forever. So that's the only thing. Questions, anything?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I have a, I have a question. So my understanding is that, so please fill me in here. So the five commissioners, if this was put on the ballot and it passed, the five commissioners could pick what rate they wanted it to be between nine cents and 75 cents for the first go around.
Yeah.
And then subsequent to that, they would be restricted to a 1% increase a year like the city is unless it went to a further vote of the people. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So I think some of the, some of the discomfort that we're hearing is where will that be between the nine cent and the 75 cent, if that is known or not?
For sure. Absolutely. And I'm, again, I'm learning a lot of this process myself because I've never been in this position before. But the mill rates are set based on an operations budget that gets presented. And then that is a total amount of money, right? And that then gets divided by-
Sorry, can you get a little closer to the mic?
Can you move the microphone?
Gotcha. So the, the, every, when it comes to this process, there's, you do like a budget, right? And you say, this is how much we need. And then that gets presented as it sets a mill rate based on the amount of houses that it's impacting. Correct? Is that how it works? So this actually could, once it's been set, we're not going to be like, oh, we're going to build a new facility. It's just the standard man, operations and maintenance budget that we have currently. That's where it would be set. There's no plan to throw anything, many funding into building anything new because that's not what this is for. And also, it actually would technically expand the amount of residents that are affected by this number. So there is a chance that since there's more houses that are being affected by it, that the current residents in here would actually be similar or potentially could go down because you're taking a million dollars, spreading it by more people. If that makes sense.
So, okay, thank you for that. So currently, is the pool allowed to raise the rate 1% a year in the current existing structure?
Yes, it's the exact same.
And is that what happens year to year?
I think, yeah, it's the standard. I, I don't know because I'd never done it before. So this is my first year in any of this stuff.
Okay, thank you.
But, but the elected, the elected pool commissioners have requested this ballot measure.
They have, absolutely.
It's all right. Mr. Young.
Thank you. That question, I think that Ms. Moulton brings up is a key part of what's, at least in my heart, trying to figure out, you know, is, is this something that, you know, I want to move forward or not? You know, I'm a, I live by the pool. I'm, you know, I, we swim at the pool. It's a great facility. And to the point of the constituents in that, the constituents did speak. And even though it was only four or five votes in a city of this size, so, you know, but I think if we had clarity to those questions that was posed, I think I would feel better about moving forward. I just think that that question, you know, Ms. Moulton, like you were saying, whether it's going to be 1% or 75 cents, you know, and you can't answer that definitively.
I cannot definitively say what it would start at, but I do know-
That would be what I would love to hear. And then that would make it easier because I think, you know, people can decide again, yes, but because it was only four or five votes, oh my gosh, that's crazy. And so, but, you know, and I, like you, you know, I'm tired of taxes, you know. But I do think though that having that clarity makes for an easier decision.
And the, the explanatory statement that we're currently working on for this ballot measure, that is going to be addressed by the commissioners to say what the proposal, like the, the goal rate would be if it was any increase at all.
Yeah. Commissioners should be here to sort of be clear about it. And to the lady's point about the nebulousness of what does it mean, I, I think that that really needs to be cleared up. So when we make a decision, it's really an informed decision this time around. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini and then Mr. Walters.
So thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Thanks for, for coming tonight. When, when this did not pass the first time, I remember I was very surprised by it because our community, a lot of times you'll see things like the hospital levy, the, the public safety levy lid lift. I mean, they'll pass with significantly more than 50% of the vote. And so I kind of started to ask people, you know, well, why did, you don't have to tell me if you voted for it, but why, why did you think it didn't pass or did pass? And most of the answers that I got back was, well, we didn't, we didn't know what it would do. And so it, it, the point is well taken that the voters have spoken and for, you know, even though it was only by four votes, if I look at the area that actually the expansion would be into, that area definitely didn't, was not in favor of, of the Metropolitan Recreation District. But I think to move forward with something like this, it seems, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And if this is the same or relatively the same language that we had before, I personally, again, not speaking for or against, but I, I personally don't see it passing. And so I'm not comfortable moving forward tonight because I think it's fair. You know, when I open up my ballot and people say to me, well, I, you know, I want a tax for this, I want to know how much the tax is going to be. Because I want to be able to make a decision of whether or not that's a fair value to me or not. And I think it's fair for people to say it's not, and it's fair for people to say that it is. But for me to want to move forward with this, and, and I appreciate the clarification too about the 1% increase. Once you know what the, the rate is, that's super helpful. But I want to know what the rate is out the gate. Because I want to know, because, not saying we would go there, but if you start at 75 cents, you know, you get a 1%, I don't know if you can then continue to create a 1% increase on, you can't? Okay. Either way, I think it's, it's really important. And we're at a time now, especially with everything happening in Olympia and across the country, where transparency and information, people want to know it and they want to see it. So for me to move forward with this, the very least, I would want to see language that tells me what that initial increase would be.
Mr. Walters.
Ms. Swetnam, do you have an opinion as to whether or not the ballot proposition needs to contain the maximum levy rate? Because pursuant to Ms. Martin's comments, there does seem to be a line in RCW 3561020 that says something about that. I mean, I know you looked at this before, county attorneys looked at this before. And if it's the same language, assumedly people determined there didn't need to be a maximum levy rate in the ballot language. But that line seems to suggest that there should be.
Yeah, I think it's a really good question. And we did go through this with attorneys for the county before. And in fact, we ended up doing an amended resolution.
Do you recall what that change was?
It was, it was, it was, there were a number of changes, talking about the boundary of the, of the area, the title, calling it a joint proposition, but, but nothing about the levy rate. But I would like to, before I, you know, give, give council an opinion about that. I think that's a worthwhile question to look into.
So the, the other thing that line in the statute says is that the city, the county or the contiguous group of cities or counties that are creating the district may limit the maximum levy rate. And I, I am not inclined to come up with my own limit for the maximum levy rate. But I think Mr. Fantini's point is well taken that the pool district could suggest a maximum levy rate. levy rate, and we could adopt a resolution with that written into the ballot text, and then that would provide the voters with, A, some certainty, but B, some explanation for why this is appearing on their ballot again. Could we, could we get some analysis on whether that is proper from the city attorney and also desirable from the pool district?
Certainly, yep, I'm happy to look into that.
Okay. My inclination is for us to not act on this tonight, pending that feedback from the district, but also analysis from the city attorney. I also take Ms. Martin's point about the joint proposition language, and if it just has to be that way, then it does. But I think the point that it implies some endorsement is a valid one, and if it didn't have to say joint proposition, I think I'd prefer it didn't. So maybe that's another question.
I think that was something that the county's attorneys needed us to amend the resolution to include.
To include, yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't ask that, you know, can we take the joint language out, but I'll follow up with the county's-
So we can check on that again, yeah. I do not think it is our job to second-guess the pool district. If the pool district wants to put this on the ballot every year until it passes, that's not entirely their choice, but maybe that is what they want to do. Might not be desirable for anybody. But I think that the pool commissioners needed to be here tonight, and that the pool district needs to do some of this analysis, see if you want to consider putting that language in there, assuming we can, and then bring it back to us for further consideration.
Yeah, and we do have a little bit of time, much, not much time, but there is some time, I want to say, we have to have it to the county by a certain date. August 5th.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I have a question from Ms. Swetnam, and I think Mr. Walters was kind of being a bit tongue-in-cheek, but actually, I'm curious, what are the rules around, like, could the pool district bring this back year after year after year if it doesn't pass?
Yes.
Okay.
If the city, I mean, so the city and the county both have to take action to put it on the ballot. And so the pool district can't do that itself. It has to, you know, there has to be a resolution adopted by both the city and the county. So assuming that happens, I'm not aware of any limit in the law on the number of times that you can bring a proposition to the voters.
Okay, thank you. And then in that case, let's say, you know, after X number of years of failures, it does pass, and I'm just being totally speculative here, is there a alternate course where, I guess, a group within the community could file basically an election resolution to disband the new pool, the metro pool district?
Certainly, there are ways to dissolve taxing districts. I think it's a little like enringing a bell in reality, and once the boundary of the rec district gets expanded, you know, I mean, I haven't looked into that specific question, but my guess is that it would be a challenge to do that, and it would have to go to the voters to disband that taxing district.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think I agree with the point that other counselors have made. It'd probably be great to see this come back after some revision.
Yeah, I'm definitely hearing from council that we're going to postpone this, but we'll still make an effort to get it before council to meet your timeline, which is August 5th, that we've got to have this to the, so that gives us two council meetings potentially.
I think we're scheduled to be on the July 28th for the county, because it has to go in front of them before it can actually go onto the ballot on August 5th.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Initially, we were supposed to be on the 21st.
So we might have, we might only have one week.
We moved it up a week, but-
To get all these, to get all these answers.
Again, the main reason why the commissioners basically wanted to have this revisited was because there was a pretty strong feeling that most, or at least enough of a portion of the community, didn't understand exactly what they were voting on, and it's pretty clear that that was the case, in most cases, just by some of the comments. And so the focus of this actually would be to be a lot more clear with the explanatory statement and the things that we have, so.
And not only explanatory statement, that's one of the things that, again, the council can do, is change the language in the resolution, and apparently, it wasn't what you even wanted it to be. So, okay, I'm looking at my city attorney, can we make it, get all these answers for next week's council meeting? Sure, I think is the answer. We'll make our-
Of course.
Yeah, great. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
There was a school bond measure, I think maybe early oughts, that failed by a pretty minor margin. School district put it back on the ballot the very next election. It failed by a larger margin. So I think that history should maybe be some informative here. Also, I think that certainly there are always voters who don't understand what the ballot measure is, but I would, I think we ought to give them the benefit of the doubt. Some of them just didn't like it, and some of them recognized correctly the uncertainty that is associated with it. I'm not particularly concerned about the uncertainty, but that's because I know that the plan here is to create a new district and then dissolve the old district. But the language doesn't say that. And I think I brought this up, last time we put this on the ballot, when we did our transportation benefit district tax, we added language, as I recall. It said, "Hey, if we approve this sales tax, we're going to get rid of the car tab." Now, we didn't have to deal with any county attorneys to put that language on the ballot, so maybe they won't let us do that, but since we know that's your intent, can we do that? Can we add language that says, "This will replace, the pool district board intends to dissolve and turn its assets over to the Metropolitan Park District"?
So I believe that we asked that question the last time around, and there was some concern about that, and I can't remember what it is, but I will go back and dust that off and provide council some feedback on that.
And maybe the pool district would need to adopt a resolution that says that that's what they're going to do, or what they intend to do, or something, I don't know. Maybe we still land at the same answer, but it would certainly improve the chances of you achieving a positive result.
All right, good discussion. I think we have our work cut out for us with getting some more information back to council next week, the packed agenda. Thank you. All right, well, there's no further business for the council. I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a great night.